Jacobson?
Here.
Finnucan?
Here.
Markwart?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Noriko?
Here.
Baker?
Here.
O'Leary?
Here.
Ray?
Here.
Six present.
Thank you. We're, we have the agenda in front of us. Are there additions or deletions to the agenda? During none, I'll ask for...
Motion to approve agenda.
It's been moved by Snow. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Noriko. Roll call.
Jacobson? Finnucan?
Yes.
Markwart? Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Leary?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Six eyes.
Thank you. Moving, we're fortunate this evening to have Troop 33 to do the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd ask you to rise for the presentation of color.
Thank you, Troop 33. Moving to special items, we have this evening, Michael Flora is present to give an update on the Ben Gordon Center FY15 Human Service Funding Annual Report. Michael?
It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. Thank you so much for your continued support of our Discovery House program. Discovery House is a women's recovery home. Individuals seeking services at women's recovery home for Discovery House has access to substance abuse treatment and programs incorporating individual group counseling, alcohol, drug addiction, and education services, as well as supportive case management, and provide structure and encourage individual responsibilities. Individuals arrive from various ethnic and cultural backgrounds, socioeconomic circumstances, and any age group. Ladies must be 18 or over to reside in the home. This is, in essence, a three-quarter way house. There is some management and oversight in the home, but these individuals have come out of either residential treatment or have completed their toxic, or detox program to allow them to enter back into the community. Through third quarter of FY15, we've provided care to 13 ladies. 13 percent, 23 percent are individuals served from DeKalb County. And then we're looking at other funding to help support that from DASSA, which is the Drug and Alcohol Substance Abuse Department of the Illinois Department of Human Services, as well as total revenues, then about $12,008, $284 for up through quarter three of this fiscal year. We're very pleased, as your funding helps provide services and care that no other funder provides. Many of the services that we provide at Discovery House, the ladies are part of all programming. Individuals in the home must be working, going to school, or volunteering during the day, and attending services or treatment programming during the evening hours. And they're also attending 12-step programming out in the community as well.
Questions of Mr. Flora?
And I have some information. I can leave with council.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Is someone present in the audience from Safe Passage this evening? Mary Ellen, I'm sorry. Safe Passage, Mary Ellen Shade, executive director, will give an update on FY15 Human Service Funding.
Good evening, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to be here, to be able to talk to you, and thank you for your support of Safe Passage. Safe Passage is a very important part of this community. We serve women, and children, and men who are victims of domestic violence and sexual assault. We operate a shelter, 24-hour hotline. We operate transitional housing, and we provide counseling, individual family and group, for women, their children, families, any men who also have experienced domestic or sexual violence. And last year, fiscal year 14, we served 768 people, excuse me, in our victim service programs. We also operate a psychoeducational group program for offenders of domestic violence. They are ordered by the court into our 26-week group program, and we work with those men as well, and some women now. We operate two women's groups, unfortunately. We're very grateful for the funding that the city of DeKalb provides us. I wanted to also make you aware that we do a tremendous amount of prevention in DeKalb County. We have seen over 8,800 children, and providing prevention education about how to prevent sexual assault, how to be safe online, all, any type of prevention related to domestic and sexual violence. And we also work with students at Northern and Kishawaki. So, we have extensive services at Safe Passage, and we're very grateful for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions of Mary Ellen? Okay, thank you very much. Moving to the next item, recognition of Northern Illinois University Super Mileage Alternate Car Design Team. Someone present. Brad Hoy.
Do you want the video to go first, or me? Okay. So, well, thank you very much. On behalf of the College of Engineering and Engineering Technology, and Northern Illinois University, and the NIU Super Mileage Team, I want to thank you for this recognition. The team is very busy preparing their vehicle for their next competition, which comes up a week from Friday it starts, which the SAE Super Mileage Competition up in Marshall, Michigan. And so, this is a great example of our outstanding students at NIU, not just in the College of Engineering and Engineering Technology, but in a variety of different disciplines, looking at ways to provide their knowledge and their skill and innovation to make, you know, industry and society a better place. And I'll tell you, they're very, very excited about the opportunity. Caught them a little bit by surprise, because they were able, they had to submit an application and were selected very, very quickly. So, the recognition that they've gotten nationwide is, is a little bit of a surprise to them, but they're handling it very well. And I know that they're very, very happy and humbled by the opportunity, or getting this recognition here by the city council.
Very good. Do you want to...
This is, well, I'll give, okay, we'll play the commercial. If none of you have seen it. And maybe some of you know that Jay Leno is just an amazing car aficionado. He has, that is his actual garage, and he owns most of those vehicles in there. But the super mileage car actually runs on gasoline, and the competition is sponsored by Shell. And these students have participated in the competition, or NIU students have participated in it for about five or six years, and have done very, very well. Their highest finish was third in the world, and they finished number one out of the, or out of the national universities about three or four years ago. So, they're looking to get back into that upper echelon. And they also, there's also some very outstanding teams in our SAE Clean Snowmobile team with the College of Engineering. They also have a Mini Baja team and a Formula Race Car team. And three of those teams will also be recognized at the upcoming NIU night at U.S. Cellular Field on June 17th. So, two big acknowledgements, one here tonight by the city council, and then, and then one coming up on June 17th. And hopefully, they'll have a big weekend here and a couple of weekends at that competition. So, thank you for the recognition. I wish they could be here to accept it, but they're very, very, very busy.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Moving to the next item, a presentation of Artigra Committee.
Good evening. My name's Billy Geese, and I am part of the Steering Committee for Artigra. I believe we have a video for y'all to watch. I thought we could watch that first, so if there's somebody who missed Artigra, they can see what happened.
Excellent.
Can we cue that?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Artigra Parade. Nice walk, we're coming out. It is such a beautiful, beautiful day.
Artigra is a day of celebration of the arts, of creativity, and the kickoff is the Arts Parade, which is a community and NIU joint effort for everyone to celebrate and show their creativity.
There's many wonderful events happening. BFA exhibitions, print sales, ceramic sales. There'll be musical events. There's so many that I can't name everything that's going on.
We're here to sing for everyone, because I feel like art is really important. So, if we incorporate that into like, just people coming in and looking at this art and hearing this music, it's just like a really good environment to be in. Art isn't just pictures or drawings. It is music, and it's, it's everything within the arts. I know a lot of art students here, so I wanted to support them. I didn't even know that they did this, so I'm really proud of them.
Part of the goal of studying art is that, at the end of that, that you share that work with others. So, we do that by having a BFA exhibition, where they learn how to write their artist statements, they learn how to install their work, and then they learn how to greet the public and talk to people, and they can get feedback about what it is that they're doing.
This phase of Artigra is the Time Arts 2015 Senior Show. A lot of people did animations, short videos, short films, and I directed and edited and wrote a 20-minute short film called Seeing Green. Events like this are important, because we do so much work throughout the semester, and especially being our senior year, we want to show off everything that we've, we've worked for, for our entire four years of college. And it's just a great opportunity to be able to see it on a big screen, and have everybody come out and support you, and see what you've been able to accomplish.
We envisioned that after this first year, people really understand what Artigra is all about, and it will just continue to grow and be even bigger in the coming years.
So, I hope that gave you a little taste of what happened. We really feel the event is a marriage between the city of DeKalb and NIU. One of the reasons I wanted to come here on behalf of the committee is to thank everyone for their support of making Artigra so successful in its first year. We would especially like to thank Jennifer Dietrich, who worked so closely with our committee, attending meetings, advising us, and really helping us getting the, getting the parade route organized. We want to thank all of the merchants who helped support us by putting up advertising and helping with the information, giving us prize awards and certificates for people in the parade. We plan to meet again in the fall to start expanding for next year's Artigra in May 2016. We're going to continue to reach out to the city of DeKalb and the community of NIU. We believe this first-ever Artigra art celebration has shown great potential for a yearly regional celebration of our creative community spirit. We hope that you will continue to support us, and we plan to work with you again next year. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Billy. Moving to presentation of Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Award, we have Dave Richardson and Stan Helgerson representing the Government Finance Officers Association.
Good evening, Mayor.
Thank you.
I'm Dave Richardson, and this is my colleague Stan Helgerson, and it's a pleasure to be here this evening on behalf of the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada to present the city with this distinguished award. Stan will give you a little background on the award.
You may now read it to you. We are, we are honored to be here today on behalf of Government Finance Officers Association to present the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to the city of DeKalb. The Certificate of Achievement program has been in operation since 1946. The purpose of the program is to encourage and assist governments to prepare financial reports... reports of the highest quality for the benefit of citizens and other parties with vital interests in government finances. The program has gained widespread recognition as the premier indicator of excellence in governmental accounting and financial reporting. To earn the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, the city of DeKalb had to substantially conform to the program's demanding criteria, which go well beyond the minimum requirements of generally accepted accounting principles. Program participants submit copies of their comprehensive annual financial report, the audit, to the Certificate of Achievement program for an in-depth review and evaluation. The review and evaluation is performed by two members selected from an impartial panel of government finance officers, generally from other states, independent certified public accountants, educators, and others with specialized expertise and experience in governmental accounting and financial reporting. Reports are reviewed and evaluated by members of the GFOA's professional staff. Only those reports that are judged by all reviewers to have substantially met the program's criteria are awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. The receipt of this award reflects the professionalism and commitment of numerous individuals as well as many hours of hard work. It also reflects a high degree of dedication and leadership on the part of the City Council. The Government Finance Officers Association hopes that this award to the city of DeKalb will serve as an example and encourage others to strive for the same high standards in their own financial reports. Therefore, it is our privilege on behalf of the Government Finance Officers Association to present to the city of DeKalb this Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Congratulations.
Also, we'd like to recognize staff, Amber Reed, Abby St. Kathy Haley, their finance team for their hard work working with volunteers to accomplish this goal.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the recognition. And congratulations to city staff. Moving to approval of the mayor's appointment, I would entertain a motion for the appointment of Bill Fanoukun, Alderman Bill Fanoukun, to the DeKalb-Sycamore Area Transportation Study Policy Committee to May 31st, 2017.
So moved.
It's been moved by Alder Person Noriko.
Second.
And seconded by Alderman Snow. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Public participation, we have one individual registered to speak to a consent agenda item, F3, the raise for city manager, I'll call him Michael Hajishek.
I know that it's hard sometimes when you believe that you have to raise salaries and attract good workers in a tough time, but at the same time with the raise and the cost of government over the last year, and you guys know, it's been significant. It's not been a little bit. There's no sign to the taxpayers that that's going to change. So, immediately now you're talking about raising our taxes simultaneously with raising the cost of government. And it's a cost. It's not easy. You might lose people. You might have people who want to go away because they're not getting as much money as they can get someplace else. But guess what? Big chunk of your citizens in this town are NIU employees. You know how many years it's been since we've gotten raises? Most of us are still getting the same pay we got seven, eight years ago. And everybody tells us, oh, well, the state doesn't have any money. Hey, the citizens of this town don't have any money. Think about it. You want $9 million for streets, a couple million dollars for sewer improvements, you raise up the salaries a couple million bucks. It costs money, yeah, I know. But we can't do everything in five years and not everybody's going to want to get what they need or get what they want in this city. Sixty, I mean, you're talking 12, 13% property taxes. I have people telling me today that it costs so much to live here that they're thinking about, well, might as well commute from Geneva. Nicer town, easier commute. I mean, so think about it. Every time you raise taxes, every time you bring, at this point, up to this point, I was very supportive of this town and the taxes. But we've gotten to the point in this town where these are really critical amounts of money. I have retired people who are coming to me saying, I can't live through another tax increase, another round of tax increases. Yes, I know the roads aren't in good shape. We all know the roads aren't in good shape, but we have to pick and choose. The county had bad problems with the road. They spread it out over 20 years. They know they're not going to get every road. We got to have businesses coming in, as you know, and we need to have some, some semblance of common sense in spending. And I'm not very, some of you who know me won't even, I mean, I'm sounding like a conservative up here talking, and a lot of people know me personally, know that's not my political bent. But this is a critical time. And so, by, by giving us another example of not being brave enough to vote on an independent raise of the city manager's salary, it shows a bit of cowardice. And I think the City Council should be voting on these things as independent, as a independent standalone bill, not hiding under a consent agenda. Thank you.
Is there anyone else registered to speak or wishing to speak, Ms. Grunopoulos?
First of all, if I'm not mistaken, this is the first meeting for newly-elected people on the City Council. I wish you well. I wish everybody well and may you be blessed with the wisdom and the strength to make good decisions for the huge responsibility that you have. Five items. The consent agenda. When, when looking at the agenda, and this is maybe something that the staff can work on, it's, it's often confusing the way everything, things are laid out under the consent agenda. And there are items on there that, here, I got to flip over to, approval of minutes. Those, for example, are, are in order and those are, it's easy to discern that that's what's there. But sometimes other items are mixed in with various items. There might, if it was done in a more orderly fashion, maybe it would be easier to discern. And the thing that popped out at me was, was just mentioned, was a 3% increase. That doesn't seem like the type of item that should be under a consent agenda. It should be vetted on its own. It would seem to me that that would be a more appropriate way of, of doing that. And also, there are some more waivers on the bidding process for some items. We've been through this route before. It doesn't seem like a very good habit to be waiving so much of the bidding process. This might be something good for the new people to, to be learning and, and, and talking about so that they can understand a little bit better how cities are run. To just jam pack that all into the consent agenda, I don't know if that's a very good way of doing things. Item number two, going to be real simple, no tax increases, try cuts. That's what my coffee folks are saying, all the way from the 25-year-olds to my octogenarian friends. The FAC, will they, the Finance Advisory Committee, will they ever have an opportunity to meet on their own so that they can review the numbers by themselves and perhaps analyze the long-range impact of some of what is going on, especially the comp plan? That really is what the Finance Advisory Committee should be doing, kind of meeting on their own so that they can do a little bit more of an analysis and then be able to give that analysis to the council. Item number four, the city clerk position. Clearly, the councils, not just this council, but councils in the past, have not got a handle on that particular office. The public clearly voted for an elected position. It's an elected position. It's the only other office in the city of DeKalb other than the mayor's that is elected at large and the public, 70% of the public said, we want that elected. And yet, the budget has been cut significantly and no office provided, even when there was somebody elected in that position. This council and this mayor have an opportunity to take care of that and make sure that the wishes of the public, the voting public, are met. It's a huge responsibility. You, you folks, you really do need to address that. And finally, on a lighter note, I wanted to thank the Public Works Director, Mr. Leskowski, for a quick response, a very nice gentleman to work with. I called earlier today, after having noticed, and Alderman Snow, I'm going to bring this to your attention because it's in your ward, our church is in your ward, and I do a lot of planting over there, as much as I can, and I couldn't help but notice on those beautiful brick streets, a Husky bus going down once, going down twice, going down several times. Those streets are not made to main, to hold that type of weight and they're going to destroy that historic area and the bricks. So, you might want to keep an extra special eye out for that part of your ward. And I thank Mr. Leskowski for responding and saying that he was going to follow through and work on that.
Thank you, Patsy.
Yeah.
I would like to clarify that the past two appointed city clerks were offered office space at City Hall and declined the offer. So, it has been offered.
But the elected one didn't.
Let me move to ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Alderman Fanoukun, seconded by Alder Person Noriko. Roll call.
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Leary?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanoukun?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Eight ayes.
And then I will ask for a motion to approve the items listed on the consent agenda. It's been moved by Alderman Fanoukun, seconded by Alder Person O'Leary. Roll call.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Leary?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanoukun?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Motion passed. Moving to items for separate action, the Resolution 2015-39, declaring intent to provide financial assistance for Project Black Bear on Lot 12 located in Park 88. Is there a motion? It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in, moved by Alderman Snow, seconded by Alderman Markwart. Discussion. I'll turn to Jennifer Dietrich.
Give me just a second here. The DCEDC and Venture One Development brought us the opportunity about two weeks ago for a Fortune 100 company who is interested in locating their just under a million square foot distribution center in Park 88 on Lot 12. The company is planning on investing approximately $40,000 in the project and plans on hiring between 250 and 300 employees. This project does meet the distribution center requirements in the property tax IGA that we have with the other taxing organizations, with the exception of the 10-year property tax abatement request that they have made. The 10-year abatement request falls in line with what was approved by the city as part of the county's, or our joint, I'm sorry, our joint application for an enterprise zone. So, this is something that they would like to have us consider for this project as well. I can tell you that the school district and the DeKalb County have approved resolutions of intent for this project already, and the city's approval of this resolution of intent is critical for having the company consider Lot 12 and Park 88. I think that's all I have as far as information. If there's questions, I'm happy to answer anything that you might have. And Paul Borick and Mark Good is here as well from Venture One. I should note, I apologize, I do have one more thing. I should note, the resolution references 300 employees and in the fever of getting this information and trying to get it to City Council within the last two weeks and the other taxing organizations, I neglected to, to reference the 250 employees. That is, the minimum threshold is 250. It may go as high as 300, depending on seasonality and when they need to hire additional employees, but the minimum base would be 250. So, that does need to be amended in the resolution.
Mayor, the resolution that's before you is essentially a resolution indicating that we would intend to work with this project and to provide the financial assistance contemplated, but it is not a final approval. This would come back to the council for a further vote with a abatement agreement in place that the council would have a thumbs up, thumbs down vote on. What this is intended to do is indicate that provided the project meets the parameters outlined in the resolution, that the council is supportive of the policy of adopting the proposed incentive for this project. As per Ms. Dietrich's comments, we would suggest amending the resolution to reflect the company's anticipated to employ at least 250 full-time employees.
Is there a motion to amend the resolution?
So moved.
I'm sorry, moved by Alderman Baker. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Jacobson. Discussion. Alder Person Noriko.
Can you refresh my memory on what the timeframe is if this is passed and, you know, discussions continue, what the anticipated?
Yes, I can.
Start date it would be?
From my understanding, the company would make a decision in early June. The construction would begin as soon as possible with earthwork beginning in June. The building shell would be completed during the winter of 2015, 2016, and the building would be completed during the summer of '16.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Other discussion. Alderman Fanoukun?
As I understand it, they've asked for 10 years, but, excuse me, we actually anticipate that the abatement would occur in less time than that due to the amount of taxes we'd be doing on the property.
Correct. Correct. The property tax abatement request is for 10 years, but the likelihood that it would actually go 10 years is, is not feasible because the property taxes will have reached the threshold of $4 million, probably around year five, six.
Okay. We have before us the amendment to the resolution. Is there further discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Leary?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanoukun?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Eight ayes.
Okay, and that brings us back to the original motion as amended. Is there further discussion on the original motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call then.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Leary?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanoukun?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Eight ayes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Paul and Mark both.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mayor?
Yes.
Could I jump in?
Sure.
I've been told that there might have been one other person who had submitted a slip to speak on the public participation.
There was, and thank you for that reminder. I apologize. Alex, Alex Nebrad wishes to speak on the public participation portion. And I apologize if I missed your hand or I realized you- I realized you had registered, Alex.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Alex Nebrad, and I have the privilege of being the current Executive Director of the Historic Egyptian Theater. I will be back in front of you on June 22nd to give you our annual update to the city, but I wanted to take the opportunity tonight to comment on the funding proposals for the theater and the city budget FY '16. Considering there are some new members on this council, let me share a few items first. The Egyptian Theater is owned and operated by Preservation of Egyptian Theater, Inc., a 501(c)(3) nonprofit charitable organization that was formed in 1978. Our mission is to share and protect the historical integrity of the theater as a regional arts center for entertainment and community involvement. Our vision is that the Historic Egyptian Theater is recognized as a center for the arts and entertainment in the region, enriching the community culturally and economically. The theater is a beloved gathering place and a source of pride, providing programming and excitement now and for future generations. We continually hear from downtown restaurants, retail shops, and area hotels that when we have events, they see a significant increase in business. According to the National Organization, Americans for the Arts, local arts patrons spend $17.42 in the community when attending an event. And non-local patrons spend $39.96 when attending an event. Using these numbers, we currently have a nearly $2 million impact on the community just through the spending of our patrons. A recent example, this past weekend, we hosted country star Jodeen Messina. 63% of those in attendance were from outside the DeKalb-Sycamore area, with 54% from outside DeKalb County, including patrons from four states outside of Illinois. This event alone created roughly $25,000 in economic impact just in one night. We are thrilled to have the city of DeKalb propose funding to air-condition the Historic Egyptian Theater that has never had air conditioning since it opened in 1929. Currently, we are closed through the summer months, an impact that is felt by the downtown merchants and local economy. Not only will the installation of air conditioning allow the theater to operate year-round, but it will help protect the investment that you, the city, and this community have put into the theater thus far. The heat and humidity creates an increased maintenance nightmare from plaster to paint to fabrics and electronics. Over the past year, we have had some exciting conversations with DeKalb County, the DCEDC, and NIU about how we can leverage the theater to help achieve their goals. One of the reoccurring comments we hear is that business owners, faculty, and students looking to relocate to DeKalb are looking for arts and culture in terms of quality and quantity. When comparing the percentage contributed to the GDP by industry, arts and culture contributes roughly 4.3%. That is more than agriculture and transportation combined. Creativity is one of the top three personality traits most important to career success. According to U.S. employers, 72% of employers say creativity is of primary concern when they're hiring, yet 85% of these employers can't find the creative applicants they seek. Nearly every community has land for businesses, healthcare, education, infrastructure, means to attract business. We certainly have a lot to be proud of in our community in those categories. But let's also promote our assets that make us unique and that employers are looking for. Let's provide a community that supports creativity, which will help grow the type of employees that businesses are looking for. Let's get competitive in a field that we can stand out among other communities. After all, we are home to one of six remaining Egyptian theaters in the United States and the only one east of the Rocky Mountains. Let's get creative and promote our unique assets that set us apart from all others. You, the city council, have the opportunity to show your continued commitment to the arts, to not only enrich the community culturally but economically. Passed out in front of you is a handout from Americans for the Arts that goes through some of the reasons to support the arts, whether it's education, healthcare, the economy. And hopefully, you'll take the time to read through that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alex. And I do apologize, Alex, not recognizing you earlier on the agenda. Moving to Resolution 2015-40, authorizing an application to the U.S. Department of Transportation's 2015 transportation investment generating economic recovery discretionary grant program in the amount of $13,450,000 for the full construction of a new transit facility. I'll turn to Brian Dixon at this point.
Yes. Back in 2010, the DeKalb-Sycamore Area Transportation Study financed a study to look at the conditions of the Voluntary Action Center's transit facility. And that study identified a severe need of a new facility as the existing facility is really beyond its capacity and there's no ability to expand transportation services within the region. So due to that study, the staffs from the city of DeKalb, DeKalb County, and the Voluntary Action Center have been actively seeking funding from various different sources for, to build a new transit facility. As part of that, DeKalb County has provided property on Barbara Green Road between DeKalb County Highway Department and Tails for a new transit facility. And at last month's meeting, we got approval for the city of DeKalb to apply for our state IDOT capital grant for about $3 million. And the county is also doing a state grant for $550,000. That, those funds will provide initial funding to do the engineering work for the facility and some of the site work. However, we still have not identified or gotten enough funding for the larger portion to build the entire facility. This, this U.S. DOT Tiger Grant provides that large funding for larger construction items such as the transit facility. We have submitted a grant twice before, and we are submitting our grant for a third time now. We have been in contact with the U.S. DOT and their representatives, and they are very impressed with the application that we're doing so far. And they've been working with us to improve our chances in receiving this transit grant. So we are, we must submit this resolution from the city council along with our application to the U.S. DOT, which we must submit by June 2nd. So we are seeking approval of this resolution to go along with that application.
Okay. Are there questions of Brian? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Resolution 2015-40 before us.
So moved.
It's been moved by Alder Person Noriko. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Snow. Further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call.
O'Leary?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Eight eyes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Brian. Resolution 2015-41, awarding a bid and authorizing an agreement with Ascent Aviation Group Incorporated for the purpose of supplying aviation fuels and services to the DeKalb-Taylor Municipal Airport from May 1st, 2015 through April 30th, 2017. I'll turn to Airport Manager Cleveland.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. The city of DeKalb requested bids to supply the fuel to DeKalb-Taylor Municipal Airport. We received two responses for the two-year agreement. The Airport Advisory Board and staff has evaluated the responses for the, for the fuel provider and feel Ascent Aviation LLC provides the greatest value to DeKalb-Taylor Municipal Airport and to the city of DeKalb. So we're recommending Ascent Aviation LLC for the fuel provider for another two years.
Are there questions of Manager Cleveland? Seeing Alderman Fanukin.
Tom, what's the approximate value of this contract? I mean, what are we, you know, like, you're gonna use approximately 100,000 gallons of fuel or what? And what's that economic value of the contract, then?
We typically use about 150,000 gallons, both jet fuel and 100 octane for the piston. Because of the fuel prices that are going down now, our margins have increased, almost doubled. So on this, on this contract, to us, right now, it's a big revenue source for us. To the, to Ascent Aviation, they're right in the market or lower than the, we only had two bidders. So their fuel cost to us is a little lower than the other bidder.
I understand that, but my question I'm trying to ask, if you're talking about 150,000 gallons over the next two years of this contract?
No, one year.
One year, I, so 300,000 over two years. What's the approximate cost to the city before that profit that you are talking about making? So like, are you saying that you're gonna pay roughly, you know, I know you're gonna pay market price, but you're estimating it at $3 a gallon, so it'll be a $900,000 cost to the city of which you hope to make about 10% of that back?
Yeah, probably more than that. But we purchased approximately five loads of jet fuel and four loads of 100 octane. That comes out to approximately $300,000. And in the budget, you can see, I estimate about $450,000 after we sell it and return to the city.
All right. Thank you.
Further discussion? And do I have a motion on the floor? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve awarding the bid authorizing the agreement with Ascent Aviation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Been moved by Alderman Markwart. Is there a second? Seconded by Alderman Fanukin.
No, that was actually Alderman Jacobson.
I'm sorry. Alderman Jacobson. Further discussion? Roll call.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Leary?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Eight eyes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Tom. Moving to reports and communications. Alderman Jacobson?
No report.
Alderman Fanukin.
Just one. The Kishawaki United Way is having their annual Day of Caring on June 18th. And I'd just like to encourage folks to volunteer for that event, and if they would just contact the local United Way office to sign up for that.
Thank you. Alderman Markwart?
No report.
Alderman Snow?
No report.
Alder Person Noriko?
Just two issues. I attended the Artigra Parade, and it was really fun. And I'm hoping that there are more opportunities for the city and NIU to work together. Secondly, a housekeeping detail. When, and this is for citizens, I'm hoping citizens pay attention to the storm sewer grates. They get covered with leaves and those whirligigs. And I've had people report about flooding or water building up on their streets. It's a small issue, but it's the neighborly thing to do. So there's one in front of your house. Clean your street. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Baker?
Go Blackhawks.
Alder Person O'Leary?
No report.
Thank you. City manager?
No report.
City attorney?
No report.
Assistant city manager?
No report.
Chief Lowry?
No report.
Director Haley?
Just wondering, I need a joint city council finance advisory committee meeting tomorrow night to discuss the wrap-up of the budget. It's here at 5:00.
Thank you. Chief Hicks?
Yes, the fire department this week received a grant from the Kitty Corporation for over, with over 200 smoke detectors, and they have a 10-year battery life. So if anybody knows one that needs one, please contact me and we'll get that to them.
Thank you. Director Davida?
Just a few things. We are getting ready to start work on the ABC grant work as we try to advance next to the, we're in the quarterfinals. What's the half-finals, the semifinals? And we'll be working with Tom Cushman of Frontier. They are going to bring in the CEO of Frontier Communications. So we're looking forward to meeting her and beginning work. One of the things that they expect us to do is use a video camera and blog about the community. So once that is up and going, I'll let you know, so you can watch for links. And then, secondly, this Wednesday, with the council holding the joint budget meeting here, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting will be moved to the conference room right off the main lobby, and it will be taped and played at a later date. And there is one item on the agenda. It is a tow yard request for special use at 1888 State.
Okay. City engineer?
I have no reports tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I would then entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss personnel as provided for in 5IILCS 120/2C1. Is there a motion?
Can we add property to that, too, please?
I'm sorry.
Can we add property to that as well, property acquisition?
Sure. And also to discuss purchase or lease of real property, land acquisition as provided for in 5IILCS 120/2C5. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there, Alderman Jacobson, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Person Noriko. Roll call.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Leary?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Eight eyes.
Thank you. Motion carried. We will move to the conference room.